Good evening. Let me go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Rural County City Gruia Independent School District meeting to order. It is Tuesday, May 31st, 2022. It is now 6:34 PM. We're at the Rural County City High School Cafeteria. Mr. Peña's staff, thank you for the hospitality. Very much appreciated. For purposes of determining a quorum, let me go ahead and take roll call. Mr. Jay Peña.
President.
Mr. Basilio de Villarreal Jr.
Present.
Mr. Noe Castillo.
Present.
Mr. Johnny Pope IV.
Present.
Mr. Elizal Velazquez Jr.
Present.
And myself, Eddie Ramirez, were present. Let the members reflect that we do have a quorum to proceed. Before I ask for help with the Pledge of Allegiance, I think it's extremely important that we take a significant, serious moment of silence, and we have quite a few reasons to do so. So I want to make sure I detail every single one of them. We've lost a few fellow RGCGISD family members who recently passed away. One of them is Erna Alanis Uribe. She was a teacher for 16 years at Troquera Elementary School. We have Rosalia Sepulveda, Ringwood Middle School Custodian, 18 years of service to the district. Dololfo Martinez, everyone knows him as an enthusiastic band director at Gruia Middle School. He did so for 33 years. And last night, we were informed that we lost Diana Schaefer, Mrs. Schaefer, a pillar of the education community, a pillar of education at Rural County City High School. She taught various subjects for 41 years, and she now joins the late Mr. James Schaefer. I'm sure everybody has a story about both those teachers. Last but not least, for that horrible tragedy that occurred at Robb Elementary in Navalde Texas, our hearts and prayers obviously go out to their families and loved ones. 19 children, two teachers. May God receive them in His holy hands. May their memories never be forgotten, and this moment of silence is in their honor and their remembrance. Thank you also very much. Mr. Jay Peña, Section 2, we hope is with the Pledge of Allegiance, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Peña. Section 3, approval of minutes. Do I have any discussion or a motion on Section 3?
Mr. President, I move that we approve Section 3 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Is there a second to that motion?
No.
Second by Mr. Castillo. All is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign. Motion carries. Section 4, public forum. Do we have anything in public forum? Thank you. Section 5, recognitions. The first one I have listed here is Central Office and its professional staff and paraprofessional staff. I'm not sure if it's a separate order or what order we're going in.
Mr. President, sorry to interrupt. We're hiding over here because we're going to take a very big picture. Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Peña, everybody here joining us, we are going to be continuing with our recognitions. We've been doing this for several months. What we're going to start off with, we're going to go ahead and start off with our Assistant Superintendents and Executive Directors. If our Assistant Superintendents and Executive Directors could line up right here in front of the stage, take pictures. And let me go ahead and name our Assistant Superintendents. We have Dr. Letizia Villarreal. We have Seratet Riaz. What's that?
Up at the top.
Up at the top. Executive Directors and Assistant Supes. Even though we had already agreed we're going to take it on the bottom, but... He's asking for the top. Okay. Dr. Letizia Trevino. Mr. Jorge Recio. Executive Director also. Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Dr. Salinas. Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Ms. Elsa Morris. Executive Director for Federal Programs, Ms. Dina Gonzalez. Assistant Superintendent for Finance, is Diana Robles Mendez. We also have Assistant Superintendent for Special Services or Student Services. We have Ms. Cindy Vassan as well. Thank you very much. Round of applause, ladies and gentlemen, to our Assistant Superintendents and Executive Directors. Next, we're going to be having our Central Office Program Directors. All Program Directors from Central Office, please report to the front. All Directors of a program, please report to the front. These are some of the programs that we're going to be recognizing, ladies and gentlemen. We do have Human Resources, Business Office, which includes bookkeeping, insurance, payroll, purchasing, warehouse, the Tax Office, Curriculum and Instruction. Federal Programs Office, which consists of the Migrant Program, other special populations, parental involvement, and technology. We have our Athletics Office, our Bilingual Office, our Child Nutrition, Career and Technology, Public Relations, Special Services, Student Services, which consists of truancy in the Mail Department. We have our Maintenance and Transportation. These departments, which we just named, if we can have all Directors, please come up to the front. Campus Administration at this time, if you can start lining up as well, we're going to do all campuses. If you can start lining up, Campus Administration, please start lining up over there. All right, ladies and gentlemen, get your smiles on. There we go. We're going to take a couple. Right over left. Round of applause once again to our Central Office Program Directors. Next, we're going to have our Central Office Professional Staff. Central Office Professional Staff, please come on to the stage. Get your gift from the board members and let's take a picture. Central Office Professional Staff. All right, looks like we're in position. Take two or three, Deion. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, give it up for our Central Office Professional Staff. Next, if we can have our Central Office Paraprofessional Staff. And ladies and gentlemen, if we could give a big round of applause to our Gruia High School Jazz Band, who have been entertaining us throughout the board meeting. Great job by our Jazz Band from Gruia High School.
We saw how all the people there.
All right, here we go, ladies and gentlemen. Three pictures, remember, three pictures. Thank you very much, once again, to our Central Office Paraprofessional Staff. Next, we will be having our Campus Administration receiving their certificates. We do want to give special thanks to the Curriculum and Instruction Department for organizing all of these certificates and gifts. Thank you once again to the Curriculum and Instruction Department for reaching out and letting everybody know who had to be here and everything. It was a lot of work. Thank you very much. If we can have our Securities and Police Department, please line up, and also our Nursing Department right behind them.
Because we can put these back.
Smile big, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much to our campus administration. Next, we have our security guards and police officers. Mr. Barrera, if we can have the nursing staff? Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department. Big smiles. Another round of applause for our security and police department. Next, we're going to have our nursing department.[1702.48]
for being, not following protocol, but I didn't want any more time to go by without thanking you all for that.
Thank you, Mr. Margul. Appreciate it. Okay, item number two is update on students' staff highlights. Mr. Osuna?
Here is the video which is going to demonstrate all the wonderful things that happened during the month of April.
At Rio Grande City Gruia ISD, we aim for excellence in every aspect of school life. April was a sensational month for our students and staff. Our library and media services department hosted literacy day at RGC GISD, where authors had a chance to visit and read with our second-grade students. RGC GISD raised a record amount in scholarship funds for our graduating seniors at the 16th Annual Superintendents Golf Tournament, held at Top Golf in Farr, Texas. Our sensational superintendent hosted an athletic breakfast for all of our RGC GISD athletics teams to celebrate the many accomplishments they had this semester. John and Alavina Hosa Elementary was recognized by TDA as a National ESEA Distinguished School. RGC GISD celebrated National Library Week with a tour of historic Rio Grande City on the Bessie III Trolley, as well as an exclusive tour of the Kelsey Bass Museum. The annual AP banquet was held at the Huleve Ballroom in Rio Grande City, Texas, where our students were recognized for earning the title of AP Scholar, AP Scholar with Honors, and AP Scholar with Distinction. Our teachers with the most usage and gains in the Imagine Learning programs, as well as the Letitia Core 5, were treated to breakfast at Denny's for their exemplary work on implementing these programs in their classrooms. Mr. Adolfo Peña Jr. hosted the first-ever superintendent's spring festival for all of our RGC GISD kindergarten students. The RGC GISD Special Services Department hosted a transition fair for all students and parents in the special services program to assist with the transition to life after high school. RGC GISD celebrated National Assistant Principals and Deans Week. We would like to thank all of our assistant principals and deans for everything they do for our students and staff. We continued with our superintendent's science and social studies challenges, and our students had a blast answering questions and earning prizes. The migrant education program hosted a family event to help encourage all students to take advantage of the many opportunities RGC GISD has to offer. The other special populations department recognized our military-connected students with a special treat and a certificate to commemorate April as Military Child Month. The library and media services department continued the literacy week celebration with a successful literacy fair, where each of our schools held a performance exhibition, and our students created beautiful art projects. Remember, at Rio Grande City Gruia ISD, we strive to give you, our students and our staff, an experience of a lifetime.
Thank you. I think that does complete section six, reports and information. Section seven is recommending approving the consent agenda. The board has agreed to discuss the following items. All of the items below that are not called out will be approved by consent. We have consent on item number one, and item number two, consider, item one is consider to take possible action on donations to Rio Grande City Gruia ISD. Item two is consider to take possible action on tax refunds for the month of April 2022.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item one and two as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Vatia. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peña. Is there any discussion required on either item? There have been none. All is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Action item three, consider to take possible action on travel requests from child nutrition program for one director and one assistant director to attend the SNA Annual National Conference 2022 in Orlando, Florida, on July 9th, 2022, through July 12th, 2022. Do I have a motion or any discussion on item three?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item two, I mean, item three, four, five, six, and seven as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Vatia to approve items three through seven. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Velazquez. Any discussion required on either item? There have been none. All is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item eight, consider to take possible action on proposed tax rates that will be published in the notice of a public meeting.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item eight as presented, but I don't know we can publish our tax rate at this time, but I move that we approve that item, and maybe somebody could explain a little bit.
All right, there's a motion by Mr. Vatia. Let me get a, is there a second to that motion before we proceed with discussion?
Second subject to discussion.
Second by Mr. Peña. Okay, go ahead and proceed with discussion, Mrs.
I just want to know, Mr. Rolando, we're just giving you the authority to publish it when you finally get your numbers and your facts together, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's all this motion is about?
Yes.
Any further questions, discussion? There have been none. All is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item nine, consider to take possible action on request from NM Contracting for pay application number two, retainage fee, and final payment for re-roofing Fort Ringo buildings. Do I have a motion or any discussion on item number nine?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 as presented in our board package.
There is a motion, Mr. Vatia, to approve items nine through 14?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Velazquez. Is there any discussion required on any of those items? Mr. Peña?
Yes, sir. On these projects, you know, it is the, like, item number nine and 10 and 14, 11, they are items that are going for pay applications. These are projects that have been done and completed. We do have our architect who has, is here to verify, but these are projects there at Fort Ringo. We want to, I would like to thank you all, school board members, you know, for allowing us to start to renovate Fort Ringo, bringing it back to life. You know, I know we have a further item in the future. We're going to be celebrating 175 years, but it's, you know, very needed, and, you know, we thank you all for that support that you all give us.
On that note, there's a lot of misinformation and credit-taking and things of that nature sometimes on social media, but, you know, I want the committee to know that it's the school district that has been renovating all these buildings. It's the first time that a board has actually taken initiative to do this, and it's coming from district and bond monies. So I do want to thank the board. I think you make a good point there, that this is our initiative to start fixing Fort Ringo.
One additional comment. We will be fixing the multipurpose center, and for the record, it is called the multipurpose center. We are adding an addition to it that is a student-faculty training center, but that's the new addition. The multipurpose center will still be called, and we will start to, you know, the process of renovating and building in about five days. So we thank you all for that as well. We do need a place for our district where we can come back together and, you know, go back to some more normalcy. So we thank you on behalf of our school district for, you know, having the foresight, and let us continue with this.
Can you talk a little bit about the tower?
Oh, yes, sir.
Please.
In addition to the student-faculty center, we are, we have, the architect has designed a tower of honor, and this will be, you know, in addition where the new section will be. And we plan to turn on the red lights and the blue lights, um, Friday night lights, and all of our sports and fine arts as we celebrate their success. So stay tuned, Rio Grande City Gruia ISD, for this huge initiative coming up.
So we're going to be turning on red and blue lights?
That is correct.
That's good. That's good. What is a multipurpose center, sir?
That is our old central office center that we had burned down, and it is our central office.
But multipurpose center. I know it's called a multipurpose.
It's used for a facet of.
It wasn't renamed. It's still multipurpose, and it's just the new additions that are called faculty and student trainings.
That is correct.
It's just for clarification. All right. Any further discussion or comments, items on either of those items, nine through 14?
If possible, sir.
Sure.
We have the plans for the three new facilities. If you give the architects, you know, some, a little bit of time to present each one, just so that you and the public knows what's coming up very soon.
Okay, so that would be in items 12, 13, and 14?
Yes, sir.
All right, so if you want to start with, item 12 is the final plans for swimming pools and wrestling center complexes for Rio Grande City High School and Gruia High School.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Garza.
Members of the board, Mr. President, Mr. Peña, we have a package for you, and we also have a PowerPoint presentation. So, but basically...
Okay, the first item, number 11, 12, sir, is the rest, swimming pools and wrestling complex.
Oh.
Correct.
Good afternoon, board. Well, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Peña, administration. My name is Juan Mujica Jr. I am with Janik Architects. I'm the senior project manager, also the office manager for the Rio Grande Valley offices. I have some, I will leave this with you right now, but I think you, I'd rather go through this right now. Just a real brief presentation. I know you guys are busy.
Sure.
So this is for the Rio Grande City High School and Gruia High School Auditorium Wrestling Facilities, and both ourselves, Janik Architects, we have a pool system, but we're also working in hand with Delphino Garcia as well. So just real quick, I have an aerial shot of this current high school in which we're in, Rio Grande City High School. If you can just focus towards the bottom part of the property, this is where we're considering locating the site. This is the blow-up of the area. The blue area is more or less where we're thinking about putting it on. 28,000, almost 600 square feet, close to the, to the football field of the athletic areas and by the gym. So it's an appropriate space, and we think it fits rather well on the site. At Gruia High School, we're looking at the, in this aerial, towards the right and the northern part of the property, adjacent to that parking lot as well, in this area here, and also 25,600 square feet. This area, surprisingly to us, has quite a bit of terrain difference there. So we want to make sure that whenever we locate this, it's high enough that we don't get into any rain issues once we get some of those rains here. It's rare, but we do get them from time to time. And so just an idea of the space programs, we had multiple, multiple meetings with Mr. Peña and his staff, myself, and Mr. Garcia as well going over there. So we kind of outlined the spaces that are at minimum required to have a functional space, functional swimming pool, and wrestling facility as well. And we're trying to maximize the space by sharing some of the spaces, the dressing areas, the restrooms, and some of the offices as well. So kind of giving you a bigger bang for your buck. And this is our layout. We've also discussed this layout with, with Mr. Peña and his staff as well, and we seem to be in agreement that this works rather well. Obviously, this is the beginnings of it. We still have to develop it a little bit more, but what we pretty said that this works. The pools are going to have a roof over them. It's going to be open air, but this is going to be sided in a way that the breezes will come and help us cool some of this place. And then the wrestling facility, the bulk of the building, is going to help block some of the northern winds when they do come in. And then we're also using the facilities to the, here's in the top, the restrooms and pool equipment to kind of help us block some of the western sun as well. So we're working with the side. We're working with, with each location that we have, and we're fortunate that we're able to use this, and this plan in both situations. And in the middle area, you can see, those are all the shared spaces, the dressing rooms, lockers, first aid, laundry, all that stuff that's required in all these kinds of facilities. Each, each department will have an office of the coach with visibility to the spaces, so they can monitor who comes in, who goes out, and safety measures. We want to ensure that we have that as well. And then this is hard to read here, but here gives you an idea of the site here, Rio Grande City, on the side, and gives you an idea of the scale. It's not precise, because we're still working with a survey on this, but it gives you an idea of the facility. So here are the pools and towards the bottom, the wrestling facility is towards the, to the part, but it has, it lines up with the current parking lot. You have parking available for this, so it kind of works rather well there as well. And then, and Gruia High School, the same situation. The southern part, you get the breezes that come in, the northern part blocks the northern winds, and the western part of the building blocks the western sun. And just conveniently, you have a nice parking lot there as well. So I think both sides work really well. The plan works really well on both sides. We're pretty happy with the plan. We believe your staff is as well as we're, we, with your permission tonight, we, we want to continue and get these out as soon as possible. Thank you so much. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, discussion with regards to swimming pools and wrestling center?
I'm going to leave this behind with Mr. Mario Lopez.
Please do. Thank you. So now, item 13 will be the discussion of final plans for the new Gruia Middle School.
Okay, you have a package that shows our plans and our elevations of the middle school. Our first slide is... Okay, our first plan is an overall of the site, showing the parent and the bus loops, the field. We don't have the field located yet. We're just showing you this so you can get an idea of the scale, but there's going to be parkings in the back, there's parkings in the front for, for drop-offs and so forth. And then... This is, these are the buildings. The top is, is the north, facing the highway. The administration is up there, then there's the three wings. On the east side, it's a sixth grade. Directly north and south is a seventh grade towards the back, and then the eighth grade towards the west. And then on the second tier, on the east side, is the cafeteria, and the fine arts, and then the gym. Right now, these, this whole complex has 135,000 square feet, and we are in the budget as it stands. This is a plan of the administration. On the, on the left and on the right, it's the plan of the fine arts. On this sheet, we have the plan of the sixth grade wing at the top of the drawing, and on the bottom of the drawing, we have the cafeteria. The cafeteria has a capacity of 272 seats per serving. When you multiply it out by three periods, we've got 812, I believe, for the, for the three periods. This is the seventh grade wing at the, on the top of the drawing, and the eighth grade wing on the bottom of the drawing. The seventh grade wing towards the back. We have a breezeway that separates the building trades shop. And besides that, there's general classrooms, and there's science labs, computer labs, and bathrooms and support spaces. The one on the bottom is similar in layout, except for that breezeway and the building trades. This is strictly a classroom wing. This is the gym. We've got two courts on the gym. We've got the, the girls on the left side and the boys on the right side. We've, we've met with the staff and go over these plans, so there's still some tweaking to do, but they're, they're getting close to the end product. And then, these drawings are, the one on the top is a section of the front of the building, the main entry. The second drawing is an elevation of the front of the building. And then the bottom two drawings are the elevations of the sixth grade wing. And that smaller building on the two bottom drawings is an alternate for two additional classrooms for the sixth grade wing. These are the, the side elevations for the seventh and the eighth grade. This is a section and an elevation at the, the first two drawings on top of the classroom. The drawing on the bottom is a section of the cafeteria. And then these are the first, the first half of the drawings are the elevations of the cafeteria. The second half of the drawings are the elevations and section for the fine arts. And this is a section of the gymnasium. The tall space at the top is where the courts are, and the two side spaces are the dressing areas. The middle drawing is the front of the building, an elevation of the front of the building, and then the one on the bottom is a side view of the building. And this is a preliminary cost on, on this project, and as it stands, we are under the budget. We're, we're trying, we're still trying to fend angle two more classrooms in these buildings, but right now, we're okay the way it is, and we still have a ways to go on this, but we are in the budget. So that's what we've got, and I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Questions, discussion? Everybody's deep in thought, so I'm giving them some time.
I'd just like that we're under budget by $65.
We weren't, but we are now. That's a beautiful, that's a beautiful.
$65, that's pretty precise.
We got to give compliments for the work. I know we were not there before, so.
With the materials costs, you were able to, even with the materials costs?
We, we had to cut back quite a bit to get it in the budget, and it's very difficult because, you know, the, the principals and the department heads, they want, you know, certain things in there. So we're having to go between one and the other, the budget and the needs.
Yeah.
But, and we're still fending, but we're okay.
May I add?
Yes, sir.
We are projected 800 students, right, or more? So we are on track with the size. Now, remember, these numbers are just projected. We will not have final price until we go out and bid it out. So these are just projected.
Correct. Any further questions, discussion? Right. Thank you, Mr. Garza. And then we have the last one. It'll be item 14, which is final plans for the RGC GISD Performing Arts Center. Arts Center.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good evening.
You're being handed some of the printed exhibits of what you're about to see. I would like to begin by thanking you, Honorable Board, and Superintendent Peña for the opportunity of providing you with our services. We have here the schematic design package for your review, and we wanted to start with a bang with a 3D rendering. Okay, so let's start from the beginning. So let me see if I know how to work this out. It's contraindios, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'll, I'll get there. Well, let's, let's begin with this. I roll, I roll it. Okay. Well, in conjunction with the great city of Rio Grande City, there was an acquisition of nine, about nine acres, of which the school district was donated 4.45 acres, so it's about half. You see the location of the site, and we've been working with the civil engineers for the new public safety building located west of your property, and ensuring that your drainage area drains towards the east, so we have minimal impact on your site. You will see on your site summary that we have the parking recommended and parking provided. Planning and zoning typically doesn't mark or delineate how many parking spaces you should have. So when we have venues like this, the recommendation is to have one parking space at maximum capacity, one for every three parking spots. So for 900 seaters, you recommend, you know, about 315 spaces based on your capacity. You are a little bit over 900. The parking provided right now at maximum point here is 246. In conversations with the developer who owns this land, I know that he says that he will sell you guys additional land if you need it. Do I recommend you guys buying it? No, not really. You are at about one parking spot for every 3.6, almost 3.7 seats. So you're fine. So we move forward with the next. Okay. How does this building look like? Well, right now, this building has been designed to meet UIL requirements. What does this mean? You need to have three sites or three places for warm-up competition. Your stage is one of them. The other two rooms, that you see the curved seating, are the other two rooms that are required to meet the requirements of the UIL. In the center, you have delivery, dressing rooms and restrooms. We maximize, there's not an inch, and I promise you, not an inch wasted in your facility. We took care of some of the common areas at the front by taking advantage of some outdoor space. So we minimize your air-conditioned lobby area. Because your seating goes up 7.7 feet, we are taking advantage of some of the space underneath and providing the director some very much needed storage area. At the front, with visual control of your parking entrances, is the administration area. And to the north side of that, you have the public restrooms. You will notice, we also provided a family restrooms that can be also allocated as gender neutral. The elevations don't look as exciting as the colored one, but we have to do this to be able to evaluate structure heights and how we're going to be placing the logo. The logo was placed on the south side of the building. Why is that? Because most of your traffic is going to be going north on FM 755. And when they turn around, that's what they're going to see, you know, as they're going in. The building is a modern look of an industrial techie site. We are using budget-friendly materials, as well as having some suggestion that ties into the area history. When we visited Chicago, Rio Grande City brick is what we saw in every historic building in that area. So you guys have a very strong architectural background, and I think we needed to honor that, you know, and tie in it with the future. So when you see those pillars, those entryways, you know, that's what we're honoring, the history and the brick for the Rio Grande City. From the front, we have suggested in playing with some lighting, up and down lighting, that maybe, you know, but it allows can be changing colors. And then we're suggesting some standalone letters at the front, some cypress trees, which are low maintenance. Italian cypress is here do quite well, and it also mimics and lines up, you know, with those pylons or those columns in the front. From the side, what happened to the side? We don't have the side one? Your exhibits does have an elevation from the south side that has the dimensioning or, you know, the, the proportions of how the sign will look if you're standing straight in front of that south side elevation. What you see in that incline is some indirect lighting of LED lights, which at nighttime is going to look pretty cool. The materials for the back areas or the lower roof areas is suggested of an integral color, meaning it's block that comes already sealed with the color on it that is weatherproof, and it has some beautiful texture to it. And we're open for any questions.
Well, ma'am, I'm just going to say it's a beautiful design. It, it is, it's...
We don't copy anything. This is original to you. We got inspired by your beautiful architecture and imagined something modern to it.
It's a beautiful design, ma'am. And if it turns out anything like the pictures, we're going to have a, a diamond in Rio Grande City. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Well, we can't wait to show you the insides. We wanted to surprise you with some videos of the inside. We are going to apply the school district colors, maybe with some amber effect on the flooring, and then also in the seating, where it transitions from the red to the grays to the blues. So again, thank you for the opportunity.
Any other questions, discussion, comments?
Just the parking recommended is the only thing we are...
You're within the recommendations. Anywhere from one parking space for three to four seats is good. You're at 3.67.
Let me ask another question, ma'am. I know that the city is making a public safety building with a parking lot. They can use that parking lot also, can't they?
Well, there's some in the front, so they may have to walk. And I hate to say, but so Texas, we're not a pedestrian-oriented community. Texans like their trucks. See they're laughing. None of us are saying, oh no, that's not true. We like our trucks. It's really hard to walk, but yes...
Yeah, but what I'm saying, there'll be additional parking next on the...
Of course there will be, yes. And there's room to grow there as well, so. But look, the chief is here, so chief, I don't know. It's public parking, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not seeing, but I just said.
I'm kidding.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Appreciate it.
Mr. President, one last comment.
Sure.
Again, we're asking for your approval for the architectural plans. This doesn't mean that everything has been completed. It's just giving them authority so they can proceed with the plans as is, maybe with a few adjustments, right? But the next step, Ms. Warren, can you just explain the process? What would be the next step now that we approve the plans? You know, what are the next steps? You know, the engineers, mechanical and...
Yes. Well, on the schematic design, although we show a lot of detail, we have to...
Just an explanation, right?
We have our take up for what we call the design development stage of design. What does this mean? We now bring all the rest of the consultants. So far, we have only involved the theater consultant and us, the architects. And then we start developing your outline for your structures, single line mechanical, electrical, plumbing, acoustics, security, IT, IT, to deliver something pretty cool. What you get from us at no extra charge is all the interior design, wayfinding, which is signage, landscape, which we already
I just want the, you know, the public community and the board to know that the next phase is the mechanical engineering and so forth, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
It's not final yet.
Oh, no, not at all.
We will bring the final plans...
It shows a lot of detail, but yeah, it's, it's only the schematic design. This is just our standard of service. So we will begin with design development, and then after that, we'll begin with construction documents. So that means your set of drawings is going to get from that thickness you have right now to something this thick.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. No further discussion then. There was a motion by Mr. Varela. It was seconded by Mr. Velazquez. All those in favor, so signify. It was items nine through 14, I'm sorry. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand.
I'll abstain from item 14.
And Mr. Noe Castillo abstaining in item 14. So items nine through 13, same side, motion carries. And item 14, with a vote of five to zero, with, no, Mr. Castillo abstaining, also passes. Item 15, consider and take possible action to determine the delivery contract method in the swimming pools and wrestling center complexes for Rio Grande City High School and Gruia High School. Do you have a motion or any discussion on item 15?
Mr. President, I move that we approve items 15, 16, and 17 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. Is there any discussion required on any of those items? Mr. Peña?
Yes, sir. I'd like for Ms. Robles just to explain the bid type method that we're going to be using, the delivery contract method.
Okay.
Yes, for items 15, 16, and 17, which is for the Rio Grande City High School and Gruia High School, swimming pools and wrestling centers, the Gruia Middle School and the Performing Arts Center, we will be going out for, on a competitive bid for these projects.
Okay. Questions, comments?
What are the, what are the legalities of, of us possibly incorporating, I guess, maybe some type of, maybe of an addendum or something to the bid? Maybe can propose a solution for the other swimming pool? I mean, is that, I know that this is bond monies, but is it possible for them, for us to say, hey, look, you know, there's a possibility that if you could do something for this pool as well? Or we can't mix the two projects legally?
No, sir. These are bond projects, so legally, we have to stick to the different propositions that we had. Remember, we had A, B, C, D, E, F. So those funds have to stay within those propositions. The swimming pool you're talking about is already in the dis, existence, so it's not part of the other swimming pools either.
Because that would be some leverage, I think, but... All righty. Okay.
Any further discussion? There being all those, it's items 15 through 17, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand.
I'll abstain from 17.
Okay. Mr. Noe Castillo abstaining from item 17. So items 15 and 16 is same side. Items are approved. Item passes. And then item 17 with a vote of five to zero, with Mr. Castillo abstaining, also passes. Item 18, consider and take possible action on agreement for architectural services from Design Group International to replace roof for Building Four in Fort Ringel. Do you have a motion or any discussion on item 18?
Mr. President, I want to move that we take possible action for architectural services. I want to give the authorization to Adolfo Peña to hire what, I know we have Design Group to check if, because I know Mr. Delphino Garcia has a lot of work, and I believe this roof needs, that's one of the roofs, I guess, that is the Robles building, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. I call it the Robles building, but Mr. Robles is going. So if, if, if for some reason that we can, if he's going to take a little, to give you the authorization to either hire him or somebody else that could do it a little faster, because we, we need to put somebody in place here in the next two months. So, so by, so by, when the school year starts, we can basically take her staff more out and move what we're going to do. So my motion is basically to consider and take possible action on giving you the authorization for architectural services to replace roof for Building Four in Fort Ringel. Item 19, giving you the authorization on item 20. And item 21, giving you the authorization to basically look at these proposals and basically for you to decide what's best for our district. Would that be the right way about that?
21?
That's correct. And also, we have to specify what the percentage of total cost would be for either the architectural or engineering services.
Okay.
As part of that motion, because, I mean, we have, we've had a variety of different percentages that have been presented.
Okay, so what is standard? Seven and a half?
The, the standard is 6%. There are some specialties.
Why don't we do this?
Go seven or eight.
Why don't we give them the authorization from six to seven and a half percent?
That, that's fine. That's within the range.
Okay, for item 19, 20, 21, and 18.
Right, so, so basically, you're authorizing either the architects that we currently have or engineers, or at the superintendent's discretion, if they're too busy to try to get these items done at, at a competitive rate.
Okay, do you want to use competitive rate?
Well, no, let's, let's stick to six to seven and a half percent.
Okay.
That way, we, we know exactly.
Okay. All right. There was a motion by Mr. Varela. It was items 18 through 21. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion as amended.
Okay. With Mr. Jay Peña seconding that motion, is there any discussion required?
Just to be clear on the motion, it's just, the motion is just to give him discretion and then giving him a range of six to seven percent. And so he already understands the intention based on the discussion, the discussion was.
Right, so...
Because we have...
Exactly. So basically, if somebody goes beyond seven and a half percent, they have to come back to us.
That's correct.
I believe, Mr. Salazar, that regardless, once we go ahead and go with these projects, we still have to bring them to the board to let them know on, you know, if we bid them out or...
Right, we, we still have to, we, it still has to come to the board as to how we're going to deliver the product. And then, and of course, whatever, let's say it's 7%. Well, we don't know what the total of, of 7% is going to be a total of what?
Cost.
Until we get it. So let's say it's a million dollars. If it's a million dollar project, then it'll be 7% of a million dollars. So that, so that's what we do. We don't get tied down to a number. We get tied to a percentage of the total cost of the building. But we still have to come back to the board, and the administration has to, has to request a delivery method, just like the, the board did today for the other three items, where it's going to be an open bid method. So that's, that still has to come to the board.
If I may interrupt.
Sure.
Mr. Delphino Garcia had submitted a proposal for the architectural piece for Building Four, and if I am not mistaken, it was 13%. Yes.
I understand, I understand that's a proposal. But if the board only authorizes the seven and a half, then, I mean, as much as I, I appreciate the work that Mr. Garcia does, but the going rate is between six and seven and a half percent. And again, it wouldn't be fair to pay double or, or more than that for the going rate. Again, architects, there's a lot of architects, and if they're too busy, we can go with another architect. That's, that's a discretion that the board's giving to the superintendent.
That's a proposal, though.
Yes.
That's correct. It's just a proposal.
Okay. That's like, the, the motion I made at the beginning is consider and take possible an agreement for architectural services to replace a roof on Building Four. I didn't, I didn't go out there and lug us into one person.
That's correct.
And if Mr. Garcia can do it for seven and a half percent, but we're giving him the authorization to, if not. And the other thing we need is speed, because on that building, we need to get it going.
Six to seven percent, right? Six to seven, six to seven percent. Six to seven and 0.5.
Yeah.
So, so I guess the, the, the motion would be amended, right? I think earlier it was six to seven.
No, he said seven, ten minutes.
Okay.
Same point five. All right, if there's no further discussion, comments? All right, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 22, consider and take possible action on requisitions, $5,000 and over. Do you have a motion or any discussion on item 22?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 22 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Peña. Any discussion required? There being all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 23, consider and take possible action on awarding of the following bids. We have three, I believe. Bid number 22 through 35 is promotional incentive bid, catalog bid, RFP number 22 dash 36, student accident insurance, and bid number 22 through dash 44, Fort Ringel paving. Do you have any discussion or motion on item 23?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 23 as presented in our board package. I, I guess it would be to the lowest bid, if I'm not mistaken, correct or not? First off and foremost.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, and Superintendent. Yes, that is correct. On the ones that we're going out for promotional incentive, and the one that we have for student insurance, there, well, actually, student insurance is for the lowest one. And then the one that we have for promotional, we have all of those that it's catalog bid, so we can go out and get from any of those to reward it. On the one that comes down to the paving, we are asking for approval, but upon, I believe it's supposed to be...
Mr. Board President, members of the...
Mr. Board President, members of the board, Mr. Peña, superintendent. In regards to the Fort Ringel paving, we had one bid come in. So what we are requesting, if you allow our superintendent, Mr. Peña, to negotiate with that one bid, that, that one company that, that won the bid, so we can try and lower him down, so, so we can get within the budget.
Well, let me make the, the motion, approve the item on 23 bid, 22, 35, 22, 36, and 22, 44, with a caveat that we allow the superintendent to try and negotiate the price from the bid to see if we could get a lower price.
And, and if I may interrupt again, I think we need to also add in there the six to seven and a half percent on the engineering.
We already paid the engineer, so that's a new point.
But there might be future payments that will be requested, sir.
On, on this one?
Yes.
Okay. So, but if we already paid?
If it's over the seven and a half and it's been paid.
Right.
The problem we have is, I don't know what the, what the, what the engineering fees were to do the street already. So to, to, to stick us to a six and a seven and a half percent, what if we already paid more? I don't know if we have or we haven't. But that's a, we just leave it to the discretion of the superintendent.
That's fine.
Okay.
I have one question. All right, Mr. Maguire, did you review the accident insurance? I just want to make sure I read your approval right as well.
Good evening, members of the board, board members. Yes, we went with the lowest bid. We had three bids. We did go with the lowest bid of the three companies. We've had these, this provider before. We will be switching from the one we currently have. But this is the low bid. And they have the better, better plan and also better cat.
Let me ask, the only thing I always ask, the same question. Do we have, have we made allowances for catastrophic injury?
Yes.
Okay. So there's something good? In other words, I don't want somebody basically becoming hurt and for a long, long time. And as long as we have caveats or some, some plan for catastrophic insurance for health, and we're talking student, right?
Yes, this is student accident. It's covering our, our cat.
But what are, what, what is, when you say catastrophic, what are the limits of that catastrophic plan, can I ask?
The current, the plan we have right now, the current plan we have is 7.5 million over a 10-year benefit period, $25,000 deductible, $500,000 cash benefit. The benefit is paid initially 100,000 at six months and then 40,000 a year, 40,000 a year for the, the 10 years. So it's a total of 500,000 for cash.
And the one we're having now?
The one is, was Zurich direct, is Zurich Insurance. It's a $10 million plan over 10 years with a $500,000 cash benefit also. That $10 million is for medical expenses. The cash benefit is for the other stuff that arises, like travel, renovating the house for wheelchair and all the other accessories necessary for somebody that's disabled.
Thank you. That's really important.
Thank you.
You answered all my questions, thanks. All right. Any more discussions, questions? All right, all those in favor, so, there was a motion by Mr. Varela. Did not get a second on this item, item 23. So is there a second to Mr. Varela's motion?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Peña. All those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 24, consider and take possible action on amendment of RGCGISD 2022 through 2023 TEP guidelines. Is there a motion or any discussion on item 24?
Mr. President, I move we approve item 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30 presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 24 through 30. Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
A second by Mr. Castillo. Is there any discussion required on any of those items?
Some of these items relate to summer school.
Yes, they do. That is correct, Mr. Peña. I know you wanted a clarification on that by Mr. Adolfo Peña, superintendent. So if we can get just one big clarification that Mr. J. Peña wanted clarified.
There is item 26, that summer curriculum, sir, in physical education. So that's for this coming year. So the planning will take place. And Dr. Salinas is in charge of that department. Then we have the T class, high-quality after-school strategic planning. And that is an after-school from one of the grants, sir. Then we have the summer professional learning. And that includes, you know, training by our curriculum department. It's going to be some of the initiatives that we have through the different grants. So there will be training for teachers during this coming month, sir. So that's during the summer, July and August. Then we have the Great Minds Professional Development. That's more training as well, sir. Then the reading academies, that is, Texas, the state of TA requires that all elementary teachers go through reading academies throughout the school year. And this is, I believe, cohort number three. So there's a, Mr. President, a little correction there on cohort three instead of two. So we've been already providing this for the past two years. So we're recommending for this coming year cohort three. So this has nothing to do with next year's curriculum except for the trainings that are going on.
Okay, so let's make the correction to item 30. It's cohort number three. So, Mr. Varela, do you want to amend that just to make sure we have the cohort three on item 30? To make sure we have it correct. Mr. Varela? Do you want to just amend it just because item three, item 30 is cohort three? Instead of two?
Let me make, and then the addendum, that, that motion that I made with the addendum of, instead of cohort two, cohort three, and item 30, correct?
Mr. Castillo, will you second the amendment?
Seconded.
Any further discussion required? All those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 31, consider and take possible action on Texas Reading Academies stipend for the 2022, 2023 school year.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 31, 32, 33, 34, and 35 presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 31 through 35. Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Peña. Is there any discussion required on any of those items? Give Mr. Peña a little bit of time.
Yeah.
If I may, sir, on item 35?
Yes, sir.
This is an action plan for Gruia Elementary. They are part of another grant. So this is summer curriculum planning and professional learning for them.
And I think just for purposes of why we're making the clarification is a lot of people thought we were transplanting the whole curriculum program or whatever, fall and spring and everything all together. So I think that was a clarification that Mr. Peña was trying to make earlier.
Yes, sir, and that's in another section. But we are implementing some of that in the summer school program. But teachers will be trained throughout, and that already started last week. So we are training, it's third grade through eighth grade. You know, we've been having meetings and trainings with principals as well. So they will be implementing that curriculum during summer school. At the end of that, you know, we'll be getting input from the teachers and then we'll see how we proceed with that, sir.
And I'm sure we'll discuss it, but that's pursuant to a grant?
Yes.
That, that was a concern. Awesome.
All right, if there's no further discussion. There was a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 31 through 35. It was seconded by Mr. Peña. All those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 36, consider and take possible action on Gruia Middle School summer curriculum planning, personalized learning, and social emotional development.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 36 and 37 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 36 and 37. Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion required? There being on all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 38, consider and take possible action on renewal of the Imagine Learning Ingenuity online program for the 2022, 2023 school year.
Before I make a motion, Mr. Peña, is there something on this?
This one, sir, it's Ingenuity. That is our online curriculum for credit recovery at the high school. So this is online curriculum. So it knows.
You're good with it?
As is, yes, sir.
So I move we approve item 38 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve item 38. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion required or further discussion? All those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 39, consider and take possible action on proposed after-school centers on education ACE grant summer 2022 classes.
Mr. President, I approve that, I move that we approve item 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, and 44 with a revised addendum in the SIS. Consider to take possible action, Technical Education Department Dual Enrollment and Continuing Education Courses for Cosmetology II and Barber II through South Texas College. I also move that we approve item 40.
Sir. It's, instead of South Texas College, it is Career Technical Education.
Yeah, I was going to make that correction.
Our own district.
CTE.
Number 44, item 44.
Okay, whatever, Mr. Peña says is fine. Item 45 and 45, up to 45.
That's 45, okay. There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items 39 through 45. For, just to make it for clarification or clarity purposes, item four should read through Career Technical Education, CTE, real high school. Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Peña. Is there any discussion required? I know there were quite a bit of items.
The only thing, it's, you know, if you look at it, a good thing is we have all kinds of education, all kinds of summer programs, not only for the young kids, but for the adults. I'm somewhere where we're going to have CDL training for the adults and we're going to have drones. And I think Mr. Velazquez's son participated in a drone. And he said it was very, his son enjoyed it. Just a lot of, I think, a lot of good programs for our kids in the summertime for them to do.
Definitely. Any other comments, questions? All right, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 46, consider and take possible action on request for permission to host a fall festival at historic Fort Ringel.
I move that we approve item 46 and allow the superintendent a complete autonomy or for him to be able to have complete say on, on this particular item or give him the authority to do whatever he needs to do on this particular item.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Peña. I, I do want, Mr. Adolfo Peña, superintendent, to kind of just briefly discuss what the, what the intentions are with the Fall Festival?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, community members. We are, as a district, we are celebrating 175 years of the existence of Fort Ringel and 75 years that the school district took over. So we would like to celebrate that success this coming August. August 12th and 13th, that is the same week that our teachers and staff come back to school. So it is that Friday and Saturday. And we want to celebrate, you know, the history of Fort Ringel and, you know, the existence. It's been a huge part of our community for the educational system. And, you know, this is a place where a lot of families got started, you know. So, you know, I want to thank you all again, board, for being so supportive and approving this initiative. On Friday, we are starting our district opening session with our historic Fort Ringel campuses. We've met already. We're going to be, you know, celebrating the we did last year in August, dressing up in this historical times. And, you know, the students and, and staff in the district will be participating. On Saturday, we intend to have a parade in the city at 10:00 in the morning to celebrate, because this is a huge part of our community. You know, that's a huge part of how Ruraganda City first got started and how it started to grow with the fort, the families. So we're going to have a, start with a parade at 10:00 in the morning. Then it'll end up at the fort. And we will, we have our high school students and drama teachers creating a play that they'll be presenting. We have high school and middle school teachers, history teachers, already developing some sessions where we're going to open up our fort and we're going to have different presentations by students and teachers on the history of Fort Ringel. So, you know, we have a huge event. Mr. Fred Margo also reached out to Fort Brown? Fort Hood?
Fort Hood.
And they will be bringing down the 12th cavalry, live horses in a show. So, you know, on Friday, they will present to our district staff. On Saturday, we will have one for the community after lunch. So a lot of great details and information coming. Do know, sir, that some of the quotes are under the 5,000 and over, if I'm correct, Ms. Robles, on these items, you know, that we will be, you know, we're going to decorate the parade field the way we did the Winter Fest. So, you know, we invite the community to come to this huge celebration that we'll be having in August and throughout.
Perfect. And the way Mr. Varela worded his motion, that's, that gives you sufficient?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, so there was a motion by Mr. Varela who was seconded by Mr. Peña. If there's no further discussion. All those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 47, discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Maguire.
Back in 1988, when the city was celebrating its SIS recentennial, I brought them down. At the time, they charged us $10,000. When I told them what we had done 25 years ago, they told me that they would not charge us one penny